Good evening, everyone. It's 5:00. We'll call to order our regular monthly meeting for the month of January. Happy New Year. I appreciate all the board members being here and also our focus in the audience. Board members, you have before you an agenda, a proposed agenda for the night. But before we get started, I'd like to, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to take just a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Billy Joe Evans, who served as our city school superintendent for 22 years and who passed away just a week or so ago. And I think it would be fitting if we take just a moment of silence in his honor and the many good things he did for the school system, our staff, and our students. So, board members, if you have had a chance to review the agenda and be ready for a motion to either approve it or to make any changes.
[inaudible]
Okay? Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right. Well, if you would all please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, you had in your, one of your emails, the minutes to the December 4th regular board meeting. Those will be available for review and approval or modification if necessary tonight.
I have a motion here first.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion of the minutes from the December meeting? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Great. And then in today's email, we had the dispersments for the month of December. I'm gonna take a moment and review those. I'm sure Ms. Williams will answer any questions. And a second, any discussion of questions about the dispersments? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right. Principals' reports. Mr. Baker from Ralph Askins.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'll start tonight with our current enrollment. For pre-K, we have 80 students, kindergarten 94, first grade 72, second grade 86, third grade 98, fourth grade 85, fifth grade 75, for a total of 590. Last month, in December, we did have some visitors visit Ralph Askins, and we had the Leadership Lincoln Group come around, and it was a good time. We got to show them our school, our kindergarteners carolled, and they actually got out on the floor and carolled with our kindergartner. So that was a fun event. And I'd like to thank Ms. Gillian Jones and Jordan Sullivan for presenting to our group, so we were excited to have them out. This month coming up for January, we have one event coming up on the 17th. We have our Nine Weeks Awards Program that day, where the parents and families can come out and celebrate with the students on that day. So that's all we have coming up for the month of January.
Back to the routine.
Back to the routine.
Any question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCormick from Middle School.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Enrollment-wise, we're still holding at about 2:53 after the break. Do have two more, I think, that are coming in later on this week. So, as customary, there is some changeover. So, good news to have. Wrapping up December, we had a lot of things going on at the school. Obviously, the Christmas Plays was a big hit, huge success. Kids did amazing. Huge thanks to Mr. Hobbs and Ms. Painter for taking that on and putting that together. And again, the kids loved it. Also, we had two groups that were going around doing some Christmas caroling as well. We had our middle school group that went with First Priority from the high school, and they visit a couple of the places. I think they may have came, same for central office staff, but then they also go to nursing homes and kinda spread a little Christmas cheer to those places, and I know they love having the kids come in. And then our FMS cheerleaders went over to Ralph Askins and actually did some caroling and kinda some interest meetings to kinda help that program as some of those fifth graders transition over. Also, I wanna thank Ms. Hicks and a lot of the people on the Fabulous 50s Board. They donated some money right before Christmas to kinda spread a little extra Christmas cheer to some of our kids, and so Ms. Sheehan took that on. One of the things we were able to do is we ordered a pair of socks for every student at the school. Ms. Bridget Smith helped us get a monogram with the FMS logo, so they gave a lot of those out before the break, and then the ones that we missed, she was actually giving those socks out today. We also did some giveaways for some gift cards and, you know, just something to brighten up, you know, some of those kids' days right before the holidays. Couple of dates we've got going on. January 12th will be our second Nine Weeks Awards. That'll be at 10:00 a.m. in the gym. Also, wanna give a huge shout-out to two successful seasons of basketball, boys and girls. Boys will finish, they've got the meeting on Friday, but pretty sure they're gonna finish around a three seed for the season, and the girls finished undefeated. So, super proud of them. They'll be the one seed. Of course, now everything goes all the way through a middle school state tournament, so we're kinda expecting deep runs for that. So, you know, we could potentially be playing all the way in through January if they keep winning. So, excited for both of those groups. And huge compliment to the coaches and the players for putting that work and that time in. With that being said, January 13th will be the start of the district tournament. I believe it's gonna be either at the high school or NGA, Lincoln Central. They're finalizing the details on that, so once we know more, we'll push that out on Facebook. So, you guys, if y'all wanna swing by, you'll know where we're at. And then the last thing is January 18th is our Winter Fest. That is something that we do for family engagement. I believe Ms. Jean started that last year, where basically they come in, $5 gets you chili and a cinnamon roll. We play bingo. We have some community sponsors that donate prizes. Good community outreach, good family engagement. So, we're looking forward to that on January 18th from 4:30 to 6:30. So, you guys are more than welcome to come by and come hang out with us and play a little bingo. But that's my report for tonight.
Chili sounds really good. I'm not much of a bingo player.
I wasn't either till...
You're starting to bargain for chili.
Yeah. I wasn't either till we went on the cruise, and I'm gonna be honest, I got hooked after the cruise. No, it's addictive, I have to say. But looking forward to that, so...
That sounds like a good night.
Yes. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I see Mr. Perrin on front row, but give us a report from Fayetteville High School, please.
I'm Betsy Davis, for those of you that don't know. Last week, we had a great start to the new year. We're really looking forward to the second half of the school year. We have 87 seniors, 96 juniors, 83 sophomores, 74 freshmen, for a total of 342 high schoolers. We wanna highlight some of our groups that went out in the community before the holidays. Mr. Hobbs took his drama classes over to Askins to read to their students. The students also visited one of our local nursing homes. Our First Priority students sang at the schools, central office, the municipal building, and several nursing homes. The residents there really enjoyed the students' visits. We're proud of our high school and middle school students who took the time to visit with residents and hand out cards to many of the elderly friends. One of our upcoming things that we have is a night of Black Box Theater Mr. Hobbs is putting on at the middle school cafeteria. It says, "Come enjoy the relaxed night of monologues and scenes from familiar TV shows, movies, plays, and books performed by students and staff members." They have some staff members who are gonna participate from Ralph Askins, Fayetteville Middle School, and Fayetteville High School. And they will have refreshments. That will be on Thursday, January 25th at 6:00 at the middle school cafeteria. We had some ACT training for our English teachers last week. The math and science teachers had had it during the first semester, and we saw a lot of success on our fall ACT. So, we're excited to see what this training will bring, now that we've all been trained by the ACT. Basketball is still going on. We have a few away games in a row this week. We will be at Forest Tuesday night and at Moore County on Friday night, but we will return home against Franklin County this Saturday. Girls will tip off at 6:00. So, I think that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you remind me the time of the night of the Black Box Theater?
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m., okay.
The 25th.
And it's at FMS?
FMS. In cafeteria.
Super.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
Anyways, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right. We, by law, make a spot on the agenda for any public comment? Do we have any? I assume we had no one request to...
No.
Before the board? Okay. We'll leave alone. Ms. Dodson?
I have nothing unless you guys have questions for me.
Some good PR for the welding and grants and some of those programs. A lot of good PR in there.
I will tell you, Nissan came to visit after you guys came to visit, and so they went to the industrial maintenance in there, and they were very impressed. So, I think they're gonna be a collaborative partner down the road on some projects, so...
Good deal. Anybody?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Mr. Yethon?
I have a copy of next year's school calendar. So, it's that time of year. I forgot one. Let's put this over. And then we will vote on this, get you guys to vote on this next, next month.
Yes, sir.
So, look that over. If you have any questions about it, you can feel free to contact me and...
You're getting pretty good deconflicting as best you can with the other local school systems and all of that.
Yes, sir.
11 November 1st, Professional Day.
Yes.
That's nice.
Yeah, there are actually four on there. So, we've got September, I'm a glass on the 20th, November 1st, February 14th, and then that May 22nd day, so...
Yeah.
And those were good, the teachers, they, it's a chance to get some PD in, get some extra training, and catch up on some stuff, so...
Yeah. Okay. So, you'll be back for us to vote on that next month?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Dr. Stiles is...
She is not processing.
Okay.
She had a repressing engagement.
Okay.
Excuse her for a minute.
No problem. Ms. Jean is here.
I don't have anything unless y'all have any questions for me.
You're making it so. Okay. Any questions from Ms. Jean? We're good. Okay. Ms. Williams, CFO reports.
Our leader, you had the December regular expenditure reports emailed to you, and just entertain you with questions that you may have. This is for information only.
No, but thank you. Those are very helpful. Our committee reports, facilities and transportation. See anything on the agenda, anything to discuss facility?
Not a lot. We are some of the different projects that I described in our work section. We're getting prices and things like that, getting that information out. So hopefully, next month, I'll have some of those to report out where we're at and kinda what we may need to be in or what we are not. But everything seems to be going pretty smooth with that. Also, everything's going smoothly with transportation. We've got the drivers, everybody's going, really doing a great job. We have a lot of demand for bus transportation compared to the past, but we're able to meet it at this point. I do anticipate we'll go ahead and buy a couple buses in the near future, because our last experience was, we purchased a bus, and it was a half a year before we got the bus. I think it won't be that extreme, but I wanna, I think I wanna go ahead and get the orders in so that we can have them ready for the beginning of next school year, regardless if there is a little delay. Things are going smoothly.
This is an appropriate time for my monthly question about...
Absolutely. Yes, sir. There...
I know you mean this one.
So, we have been in talks a little bit with FEMA and TEMA, and while nothing major has happened, we are excited to, I'm excited to report that we've got the potential of having some new personnel stepping in on the TEMA side to help us try to move the project along a little better. So, that's good news. I'll have a little bit of a meeting tomorrow, and hopefully, they'll tell us who that personnel is gonna be, so they're our eyes on the project, which is much better news than the stagnation that we've had, so...
Yeah.
Hopefully, well, I'm not gonna venture timelines.
No promises.
It is moving a little bit, so I'm excited about it.
Great. Great. All right. Finance has just three amendments. The first one is line item amendment number two to the FY24 general purpose... Yeah. When I said "general purpose," it didn't seem... It sounds like a cleaner, not a budget. Just didn't roll off my tongue, right? And as you can see here, these are, my understanding on number two is that there are no new monies. We are just literally doing some touching up around budget lines. This is just an internal system. We doesn't have to go to the city for approval. And you can see the dollar amounts are quite small, and we're just, instead of waiting until the end of the year, the new philosophy has been, let's kinda doctor these things up through the year as it makes sense. So, I would make a motion that we approve line item amendment number two.
So moved.
Okay? Thanks. A motion and a second, any questions about that? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right. We also have a, let's see, there's a cafeteria listed next, didn't there? FY24 cafeteria budget amendment. There's actually $75,000 in new revenues in grants and, is it all grants, or is that just a portion of it?
It's the USDA, new monies that we were receiving.
Okay. Okay. So, that's being factored into the cafeteria budget now that we've received it. So, I'd make a motion, we approve cafeteria budget amendment number one.
Clear.
Okay. Second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And then we also have a general purpose budget amendment number three, and this has to do with $23,048.19 of early childhood education funds.
That is new, that was a new grant that was awarded. It's called the State Special Education Preschool Grant. That is additional funds that we receive on the first part of it. But the second part of the budget amendment is just some items that we're, monies that we're moving from one function to the other for mid-year cleanup with our budget.
Right. All right. So, I would make a motion that we approve that budget amendment number three, the general purpose. And I have a second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank y'all. And that's all the finance matters I know are... Insurance and policy has a longer list of books than I have.
Yes, I do. I have a few. I move that we approve the revised policy 5.305, family and medical leave on second reading.
Okay. A motion?
Second.
And a second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay.
I move we approve the revised policy 4.603, promotion and retention on second reading.
Okay. Motion?
Second.
And a second, any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
I move we approve the revised policy 1.105, school board legislative involvement on second reading.
All right. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay.
I move we approve the revised policy 2.601, fundraising activities on second reading.
All right. I have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great.
I move we approve the new policy 2.8051, debit cards, credit cards, and credit lines on second reading.
All right. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Well done. Thank y'all for your continuing work on keeping our policies revised. Mr. Jones?
Sir, sadly, I've got a couple of resignations that we will need y'all to accept. We'd like, I'd like for you all to approve the resignation of Ashley Blake Smith, a tenure teacher with our system.
You're never fine. It's just a necessary duty of our board functions. Okay?
Second.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Okay. The other one, please approve the resignation of Julia Townsend, a tenure teacher. She's been with us for quite a long time and done a fair task of jobs, so we'll miss both of them.
That's right. So moved.
Second.
And a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right.
I, also, just for the information on the board, I've made arrangements. It's agreeable with everyone. It's something we have to take voting action on, but we've talked in the past that it's been a while since we've had board meetings at the schools. So, if it's agreeable with everyone, we'll try to have our February meeting at Ralph Askins, and then we'll go the next month to the middle school and then the preceding week of the high school. So, the next three will be off this side and the actual building, starting from the youngest to the lowest.
One.
Sound good?
Love it.
Great. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Awesome. Well, we have in our UTRUST appreciation series of appreciation, we actually have one tonight. I had it pulled up earlier, and it's not... Oh, there it is. Yeah. This, for the month of January, our appreciation month is in honor of our food service workers, and we certainly appreciate the work they do preparing breakfast and lunch and really making sure all the Tigers have healthy meals. And I think our food service folks have really set a high bar, particularly with all the farm-to-table sort of things that they've done over the last year or two, maybe. Maybe time has gone faster. It's maybe two years we've been doing that, but providing those healthy meals to our students is just an absolute top priority, and so we definitely wanna... I'd make a motion, we approve this resolution in their honor. It would be that we are resolving to designate January 11th as officially the Food Service Appreciation Day for all our city schools, so I would make that motion.
Clear.
Okay. Motion and a second, any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. And then you also had in the email today, it was in today's email, a draft resolution that is, would be numbered if we approved it, it'll be Resolution 2024-D1. And this will come as no surprise, because I think school systems all across the state and the Superintendent's Association and others are doing similar sort of things in opposition to the Governor's Education Freedom Act, as it is called. And I hope that you each had a chance to read that. I'm sort of tempted to read it, to get it in the minutes of the, of course, the resolution will be in the minutes of the meeting. But this is a serious, to us, both near-term and especially long-term threat to funding for public education in Tennessee, and we are genuinely concerned. I'm genuinely concerned. I trust you are as well. So, if you'll be patient with me for just a moment, I'll read through this, 'cause I think it is worth really a moment of focus. This is a resolution urging the General Assembly to oppose the Education Freedom Act and other expansions of education savings accounts. Whereas Governor Lee has proposed an Education Freedom Act to the General Assembly, and whereas we believe very strongly the passage of the Education Freedom Act would do significant harm to public education in Tennessee. And whereas education savings accounts have an abysmal record, including hampering student achievement, inviting fraud and waste with tax dollars, and costing states exponentially more money to operate than originally planned. And whereas nationwide research has repeatedly shown that students participating in ESA and similar voucher programs test worse than their similarly situated peers who remain in public schools. And whereas expanded ESA programs, like Governor Lee has proposed, have led to fraud that is difficult to prevent when private citizens are handed debit cards with taxpayer dollars loaded. And whereas in anticipation of such fraud, Arizona, for example, has spent significant additional public funds to audit their ESA program multiple times annually. And whereas in virtually every case where ESA eligibility was expanded, states have spent far more on the programs than what was originally announced to the public. Now therefore be it resolved that Fayetteville City Schools Board of Education urges the General Assembly to research and learn from the mistakes of other states and avoid unnecessary waste of tax dollars in Tennessee. Be it further resolved that we appeal to the General Assembly, especially to Tennessee legislators who represent Fayetteville and Lincoln County, to oppose any legislation that seeks to establish a new statewide ESA program or expand the existing ESA pilot program. And be it further resolved that we appeal to the General Assembly to support public education by fortifying our public school systems, ensuring access to quality education for all children, and safeguarding the responsible use of taxpayer money. And I would make a motion that we approve that resolution tonight and be able to forward that. I'd like to ask Mr. Jones to forward that to our representatives and senators for this, for Fayetteville and Lincoln County area, so that they get a personal copy of it from our school system, assuming it passes in just a moment. So, I would make that motion.
Second.
Second, any comments about that or questions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Thank you for that, and we'll sign that tonight and be able to get that launched off to our respective elected officials. Thank you. Two other things, just in closing, I appreciate Ms. Hopkins for reminding us about the Tennessee Ethics Commission email we all got. We've got till the end of the month. I see Mr. Oliver smiling. You've probably got one of those forms to fill out also.
I did my number today.
Yeah, I did. I did. I will say that over the years, it's really improved, and it's easier, because they have last year preloaded and just make tweaks and move on, but it's still, you don't wanna forget that one, so be sure to get those turned in. And then our February meeting is scheduled ordinarily for February 5th, and that is a fine day for the meeting. I will, I'll be out of town all that week. I'll be on business travel, so I could certainly meet without any... I hate to miss the Ralph Askins business travel. But we, you know, proceed as you see, as the board sees fit. It may not be possible to easily move or something, 'cause that's gonna entail a whole week. And in fact, the problem is, the next Monday is the Martin Luther King holiday. 15th.
You're in January.
15th. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. My calendar turned over. Yeah, so it will be the 2nd. Yeah.
Are you still gonna be out of town?
I am. Yes. I am still, I am out of town, the 5th through the 10th, so I did have that much correct. correct.
The next Monday.
That's right. That's a, oh, that's a very valid question. So I mean, obviously, you don't have to change it because of me, but...
We do.
I would, I would love to be here for the Askins site visit.
It's not a problem if it's, except if it's the second Monday.
Would, would that work for the board members if we moved it to five o'clock on the twelfth of February?
Move, move, move.
All right. Let's do it. Um, all right. So we'll, we'll, uh, get that announced to the public that that, uh, board meeting will be on the twelfth, not the, not the fifth.
So that's also the week of tournament ballgames. So...
Pardon me?
That's the week of tournaments.
That's true.
So if it's a Monday and we play on a Monday, I won't be here. So.
Would it, would, would it help if we moved it to four maybe?
Yes.
Somehow. That's less time for the teacher and, I mean, that'd not be easier for the staff if we do it at school.
Yeah, it's easy for us to do as far as the staff is concerned, but I don't, what about the board and their work schedules? Not necessarily.
Where, where would the gang likely be? Does this will be district turn?
What are they?
Eagle Bowl.
So an hour away. So if we could save an hour on the evening, maybe that would help.
But do you think it might?
Gotcha. Or what if we said four thirty?
Four thirty would help and we'll need it fast.
That's right.
You set the timer.
Okay. Okay. Well, why don't we try that? That seems like a good compromise. Why don't we say four?
I mean, we've gotten pretty efficient with meetings, so we can work toward that end.
Thirty-one minutes, right? We weren't even trying.
Yeah, yeah. We weren't working hard to do that. So we can make that one as efficient as possible.
Perfect. Perfect. At, at Ralph Askins.
Monday will be girls probably, right?
Yeah.
More than likely.
Monday will be a good girls game.
Should we just make it Tuesday and, and...
Well, send the boys a one. Yeah.
Yeah.
You want to move it to the second, no, the first?
Well, I was, yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. Could we move it to the Thursday, the first? There's no ballgame that night, right?
That will, I mean, I don't have an issue with it.
Why don't we just do that at five PM on the first?
Look at Sean Paye coming in there.
What's she said? March barbers have...
Uh, July.
February.
July. February. I assume you're talking about February first on the Thursday.
Oh, yeah. Is it still at five?
It would be five. Why don't we just do that? Five o'clock on Thursday, uh, February first. I think that's an excellent idea.
Never thought of it.
Well, because the other thing we're gonna run into is if we're doing it at Askins, we're really gonna want to get a little bit of a tour around and see some of the facilities things and, and things. So we really need a little time.
You hate to go rushing through it.
Right, right, right. Or miss it altogether. Yeah, that's an excellent. So, so we've got that set for five PM Thursday, February first. That's excellent. Thanks for everyone's flexibility on that. Okay. Any final thoughts? Uh, Mr. Oliver, anything from the city?
Uh, the RAC Department has decided to do a volleyball program this year and we appreciate the city school system for letting us, uh, do that with y'all using the genome. So greatly appreciated on that. So.
We're excited to have the opportunity to partner with them as we've partnered with so many other things, had a great relationship for a number of years. And I'm looking forward to expanding that to, it'll be good for, get the citizens who are our students. So it's gonna be great.
Very good.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, if we have nothing else, we will stay in the journal.